Everybody, my name is Art Whitman, Chair of the Shasberry Select Board. I'd like to call this meeting of the Shasberry Select Board to order on Monday, May 1st, 2023 at 6:33. First order of business, is there anything on the agenda that anybody has a conflict of interest in?
No.
I would like to say that there's a couple additions to the agenda. Jim Henderson from BRCRC is here. We're going to be talking about a vicious dog hearing and a pay scale, is that right?
The transportation.
Transfer station.
Charges.
Charges, okay. Okay, we have minutes from a couple meetings. First one is April 3rd. Who was here? Myself, Mike, Martha, Tony, and Naomi, okay? So we're all here. Entertain a motion to accept the minutes of April 3rd.
So moved.
Moved by Naomi.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We also have minutes for April 17th. Myself, Mike, Martha, and Tony. Naomi wasn't here.
Right.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Tony, second by Mike. I do have a concern is that in a paragraph it said the railroad bridge near Twitchell Hill Road will be replaced to bring this rail system up to so on and so forth. I don't know, is there a rail thing, but near Twitchell Hill Road?
I don't believe that's the right location.
Okay.
I believe it's off 67. I mean, I'll double check that. The rail yard was clearing a culvert underneath by Twitchell Hill. They were in the swamp doing that last week.
Okay.
But no, there's no bridge.
Okay, well, I underline that if you can, all right? With that, let's see, we have an amended thing, is there any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So carried, 4-0-0. You abstained.
So I did.
I'm sorry. They gave me the warrants last time and it was on the back. I've never seen that on both sides. Threw me for a loop. Okay, I have check warrant number 35 for $42,521.95. Moved by Tony. Second by Mike. Forgot my glasses, we'll struggle through this. Items over $1,000 or more, Aflac, $1,015. Bennington County Regional Commission, $6,211.
That's for a payment for the new hazardous waste facility.
Okay. Dufrane Group for Engineering, $2,232.
There was a sidewalk payment.
Oh, another one for $4,300.
That was the, which one was that? That was for filings paperwork for the water loan.
Okay. GABF Fuel, $2,427. Innovative Surface Solutions, probably for chloride, $5,458. M&amp;T Bank, $1,942. Sycamore Landscaping, $2625. TAM Incorporated, $8519. And that's it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And next we have payroll warrant number 21 for $27,472.08.
So moved.
So moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Next is public com, or, let's see, announcements is next. Naomi, you had, yeah?
I do, I do. The New England Board of Education is giving their annual award for Vermont this year to Alice Miller. And that will be occurring tomorrow in Montpelier.
Thank you. Alice was a representative for many, many years and served on the education board up in Montpelier.
Congratulations to her.
Congratulations to Alice.
And to our town to have such a distinguished person, getting it for the state of Vermont. I had to.
Tomorrow, we've got a public meeting at the high school, 5 to 7.
The presentation.
Yep, the solar project is giving.
It's nothing, they're putting it on, there's nothing to do but.
It's not at the high school.
It's at the Shasberry Elementary School.
Shasberry Elementary School, okay.
5 to 7 p.m. And then Saturday, May 6th is green up day. There are bags downstairs to pick up if you'd like to green up and then leave them at the end of roads and they'll be picked up by the Department of Public Works.
There will also be a container in Coal Hall. We get a container every year from TAM, so you can bring your bags back here and put it in the container.
That it? Anybody else have any? What was the date for cemetery?
May 1st.
May 1st?
For cleanup, for making sure that all of your things are away.
Yep.
Yep.
All right.
Oh, and we also still are looking for two members for the cemetery committee, so if that's something you're interested in, there's information on the website.
Thank you. Anything else?
Jim Henderson. Well. I have a quick announcement.
Yes.
Tomorrow morning, your road crew, we are hosting a Bennington County Road Foreman meeting at the DPW. We're talking about proper culvert sizing, culvert installations. That's Josh Carver Hall. And then a employee from DEC is going to be talking about wetlands, wetland permits, and conflicts with beavers. And any of you are welcome, although you may be short a sandwich. Because I already got the order. That starts at 10 tomorrow.
I assume Mike knows about this.
And it's at the garage here in Shasberry, on North Road, okay.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. Anything else? Okay. Public comments, do you have anybody on Zoom?
Nobody on Zoom.
Nobody on Zoom. Treasures?
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
We start with a caveat. This should be the final ones for April, but the website for the bank was down today, so I don't have the.
Cash flow first? Cash flow first?
Yeah, cash flow first, please. I don't have the interest in there and any money in or out from Friday to today is not included in there, so I don't know what the problem was with it, but it was down all morning. So I didn't project it to the budget because the numbers are not complete, so let's see what's going on. The highway state aid we already talked about, a fairly nice chunk of delinquent taxes, you can see. That's kind of a lot for this time of year. State per parcel transfer I already talked about last time. There's not much new going on here. Do you want to go down to the bottom, Dave? Yeah, so that's our cash, a pretty good number to take us through to the end of June. As I've said, it's looking like we probably will, depending on when I get the tax bills out, I'm hoping we will not need to get a line of credit this year, but that's something I watch very carefully this time of year. I got word on the final education reconciliation for this year. That's always a bit of a question mark because they, with, it's just an estimate that we give to the schools in December, and then the state comes back with their final numbers and they can be, for them it's margin of error, for us it can be a fairly nice piece of cash. This year it's going to be, I think it was about $59,000. So that's, it doesn't affect our budget at all, it's just they're correcting what the amount of the state transfer for education should have been. So it's just a little extra wiggle room with our cash if it goes that way. Some towns are told you've got to pay more, and that has not happened to us. So that's a little bit more buffer. I don't know when we'll get it, that comes from the schools, but it'll be before the end of the year. So that's everything on the cash flow, then we can just take a quick look at the reserve funds with the same caveat, don't know anything about, there might have been some water payments that came through as an ACH, and this also doesn't show interest. So if you look at the three numbers there, that's money coming into the water department at 260, that's just, you know, fairly small amounts this time of year because the new bills are ready to go out soon. At the Lister's reappraisal line you see there, 290, that's the transfer of money per parcel that comes from the state for the, to, for us to accumulate for when we have to do our next appraisal in a couple of years. And Restoration Fund, that's the money that Marlene takes in downstairs and for, when, she takes in $4 per page, she owes to this Restoration Fund for recording fees. And I have not, had not done it yet this year, so that's why it's one great big transfer. So that's, as of right now, we're completely up to date with the transfer to Restoration. Any question about any of that or anything else? Yes?
In years past, the holdup on getting the tax bills out was that we didn't have a grand list number, and we've made some changes.
Yes.
Is that, looks like it's going to be easier?
The member guy was here today, trying to concentrate over a very loud dog.
Yeah, a very loud dog.
But he was working with Gina on the grand list. Are they on schedule?
They're on schedule. The holdup right now is homestead, and they're getting it, they used to get it in like groups, now it looks like it's going to be one giant dump. And so that'll hold it up. But it's still plenty of time. I fully anticipate, which is the reason we hired him, is so that we can get these bills out, never ask for an extension again.
Yeah, well, there's nothing we can do until we know what the education rates are going to be, and that doesn't come until July.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
The state date, we should meet the state date.
Okay, that's why we did it.
Yep.
Thank you.
The last couple of years we've gotten them out just about as early as we could possibly be. That's always the goal.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I don't have anything. Anybody else?
Nope.
Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you, Melanie. Department of Public Works report, so have Jim come first probably?
Yeah, there isn't, Mike is unable to be here tonight, personal reasons, so Jim has a presentation on some funding opportunities and some stormwater issues for the town.
All right. I'm so excited, I drove through two major downpours, hail, and I ended up in bright sunshine. Coming from Sandgate.
Just from Sandgate.
Just from Sandgate. So I'm here to tell you about a grant that I applied for.
You dropped something, something slid out of this, it's on the floor.
Your map.
Oh, this is the inset map for this kind of complicated area down here.
Okay.
And I'll leave these for you so you can look them over, and I'm going to pass you out. I think I made enough copies, I hope anyways. And I'm going to beat this package here with Dave. I'll go through this briefly, just for a little bit of background. Since 2015, Shelley Styles and I, when Shelley worked for the Conservation District, the two of us have applied for and received five different grants to develop stormwater master plans for towns in the county, and Shasberry was one of those towns, and this stormwater master plan was developed by Fitzgerald Environmental in 2019. And there's four other towns that have existing plans, and then a couple towns that are in progress right now. So with that in mind, some of the plans are, you know, several years old, and I know that we have accomplished some of the projects that were identified throughout these towns, and also knowing that boards come and go and people change, I had an opportunity to apply for a grant through the Vermont Clean Water Fund to review and update the stormwater master plans that we have in existence, and meet with the road foremen and select boards to discuss identifying one project out of all the towns, per town, that we will do site visits on, do any outreach with property owners, the state of Vermont, if there happens to be any need with the federal government, perhaps Army Corps of Engineer, and develop and get ready to apply for a grant for one project per town. And my, I'm here to tell you first of all about this plan that is already in existence. I only printed off the most important parts because it's somewhat complex, and every page is somewhere this big, somewhere this big. And I printed you off the Appendix D, which are all the projects that were identified. I also made you a map of all those projects, and this is an inset map that occurs around the Pollens area, Daniel's Road. Part of that original grant was to identify these projects, and then we met with the select board and the road crew, and we prioritize all of the projects that they identified, and we identified seven of the projects. They're the more complex ones that Evan Fitzgerald and his group developed conceptual engineering plans for. So I'm going to leave this here with you.
Great.
We've already done some of these projects, but I'm not going to go through the plan with you, but I'd be more than ready and willing to come back to discuss them, but I really wanted to come and tell you that I got this grant, I've met with Mike, we have identified a project that we would like to work on, and we've also identified a project for another program that I manage with the towns, and that is one of the packages as well. Any questions up till now? Okay, so Mike and I, we have two sources where we go to when we identify projects that we're going to go. There's this one particular program called the Grant and Aid Program, and every year the towns that participate, they get a grant and then a 20% match that comes to a total project cost. And they have to be connected to or have to improve what they call a hydrologically connected road surface. And those are road surfaces within 100 feet of receiving surface water. There could be a wetland, a stream, a pond, a lake. And so Mike and I will look at this, we'll also look at the road erosion inventory that was conducted back in 2019, and the municipal road general permit data portal that has the map and the up-to-date work that has been done. And then we also pick Mike's brain and he'll say, well, this is a problem that we always have problems with. So between those three different sources, we always come up with a really good project that we do. And the road crew does really good work, as I think you all know. So this year's Grant and Aid, we, and there's, it's shown in this conceptual site, this year we're going to do Trumbull Hill Road, starting at the intersection of, of something hill.
Fox Hill?
Yes, Fox Hill, and then there's another road that goes.
Yep.
Yep.
We scoped that out and I submitted it last week, I still haven't heard back yet, but they will, Vtrans will send an email to Mike and Dave is also on that connection and say, okay, we approved this, go for it. And they have to complete that job by the end of September. And it involves replacing and upgrading several culverts and stone line ditching. When I was out there scoping it out, one of the neighbors came out, a really nice guy, and he was thrilled because he started off, when I told him what I was there for, he said, oh, well, let me tell you some of my ideas. I said, first let me tell you what I'm going to suggest, and it was all on his list.
Yeah, good.
Everything that you wanted to tell me about, we're going to do. So that's already submitted. The project that Mike and I would like to scope out and submit under this new grant that I just recently received is a perennial issue that has been pretty much since the development was made. And this is off of Daniel's Road where Mountain View and Glasson View Roads come together. You all have seen these washouts and the vast amounts of gravel.
Yeah.
That eventually ends up in Parent Creek. That's in this stormwater master plan, so as far as my grant agreement goes, it's good, it's good, we can pursue that. The other reason why we want to pursue it is because it is a perennial issue, it happens all the time, and it's not going to be fixed until the town takes the course to do so. And this project would be a really good candidate to apply for a Better Road Grant, which those applications are typically in the middle of December. And I will tell you that I think I have 100% track record of Better Road Grants that I've submitted on behalf of towns, if I can point to a stormwater master plan and say, it is Project DC18 in the Shasberry Stormwater Master Plan. It elevates it.
Yep.
Yep.
The other reason why it's elevated is between Shelley and I, we have entered every one of the projects from the stormwater master plans for all the towns into a database that DEC maintains. It's called the Clean Water Project Database. And they are entered into this database, they review it, and then they give it a project number. And I won't go into the details, but if I can also in my application say, it is identified as project number 18A in the Clean Water Projects Database, so it's almost a no-brainer.
Great.
And so Mike being Mike, he's like, Jim, let's get a project that's a pain in my butt, and then also we can almost be assured that we'll get funding for it. That's why we want to submit for Daniel Road.
Okay.
I'm not going away for a while. There's other projects in here that I think you would all agree that yes, this is an issue, and there's one right across the road at the Pollens parking lot. That's a conceptual design here. In the grant that I currently have, I reserved $7,500 for engineering costs, if we need an engineer. So even though, I'm just saying, if we get through all these, and I'm going for the low-hanging fruits, to be honest with you, and they're the obvious ones, the ones that are fixable and we all notice it, but average person might not think about a project at Howard Park or, you know, Trumbull Hill Road, they don't drive on that, but, so you get my point.
Yes.
And I won't belabor that anymore. I'm going to leave the map, and I'm going to leave the conceptual designs for the seven projects that five or six years ago, we said these are the most important ones and they're the most complex ones we need engineering conceptual designs for. A lot of these are no-brainers, things that the Grant and Aid Program already covers, stone lining ditching, upgrading culverts, removing grader berms, adding crown, that type of thing. So that's what I came to tell you, and also to invite you to the road foreman meeting if you want to come. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them tonight, or if you want me to come back after you've had a chance to look at what I've, I'm happy to do that as well.
You've done a fantastic job.
Thank you for all this work. This is an enormous amount of work, we appreciate it.
Shelley too, right?
I live for Clean Water and Brownfield Development. I'm really happy with my job right now, but those are two very, you know, fulfilling roles. And I can't tell you how pleasurable it is working with your road crew. They're up there.
Yeah, thank you.
We do, we do have a great crew.
We realize that, yes. We appreciate that. So you don't need a vote of the board for any of this, you just, you just informed us and that was all that's necessary? Or would you like a vote?
I don't believe that a vote is necessary.
Yeah, we'll come back when we ask for the money.
I would certainly entertain any discussion if you had an issue with the project that Mike and I have already talked about.
No.
We spent a morning two weeks ago going over this, and also going over the municipal road general permit database and looking at all the projects that still need to be done, and I trained him how to use and to update work as he goes along and does it.
I'm sending him to a training course for that. Because, you know, it's funny, because we were just doing that a couple of weeks ago when we got you involved in it because it has somebody quirks to it, they just announced a course for people to go where they'll teach them how to enter into this database, which would make it a lot easier. They just put that out.
Good enough.
Yeah.
And it sounds like both of these projects that you're working on with Mike are going to most likely be funded because we've elevated it with all of the kind of background information that we've created and done.
Trumbull Hill Road is a definite.
Okay.
Unless, of course, I submitted it on Thursday, I scoped it out and submitted it to Vtrans. Generally it takes them a few days to get back to me and the town. In this case, they. In this case, they will get back to Dave and Mike. However, there's over 200 towns right now and people like me who are inundating them right now. So, the first few that I submitted about a month ago, I get back the next day. It will probably be a few days. However, it is easy, I wouldn't say easy, because I don't do the work they do. But, it's, in their, you know, work skillset, it's a no-brainer. Replacing some culverts that are damaged or undersized and installing two new culverts that we think need to be added to deal with water before it goes across people's property.
Yep.
And that one landowner, he was so happy to hear this.
Good.
The other one that is related to this particular grant, you're right, that would be highly elevated because it's in this plan and it's in the project's database.
Okay.
So, and as I indicated, we would apply for Better Roads Grant for the next year. And generally, that application is due in December and they give you a year and a half to complete it.
Okay.
And I would just need Dave's signature probably on the grant application.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you so much for coming and giving us all this information.
Lot of hard work.
Hey, Jimmy, about Paul Lynn's, do you know who marked out the culvert there? Who's gonna do that work?
Pardon me?
You mentioned Paul Lynn's, do you know who marked out the culvert out front and who's gonna replace the drain?
You know, I noticed the paint on my way here.
Yeah.
And I have not heard anything about this.
Yeah, I haven't either. Just curious, if it's a state highway, they could be figuring it out.
Maybe you should stop by and find out and say, "Hey, by the way, this is what an engineer designed for us." Because Pollens is in here.
No, I noticed. We never looked, because there's a number of state highway ones in there which we can't do, so we don't pay much attention to those. But, yeah, I did see it marked out and it's exactly what they're talking about in there. So, I was just curious.
I believe they wanted to put a catch basin and a, and a culvert to like an infiltration trench before it gets into the brook.
Into the brook there, yeah.
So, it's partially, it's treated. At least it will remove sediment.
Right.
You know, petroleum, that's another issue, but...
And it looks like around that drain, it partially collapsed.
That wouldn't surprise me. It was, the structure was in pretty poor shape when I was there with Evan Fitzgerald.
Yeah. Just curious if you know.
Okay. Very good.
Okay, well, thanks for having me.
Thank you. Take care.
As I said, I'd be happy to come back if you want me to talk more about stormwater master plan. But I assure you, we're gonna continue to knock off these projects because they are the low-hanging fruit.
Excellent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What would you like to tackle next, Dave?
Why don't we start with the transfer station, changing how we pay.
Yeah. The scales, it was brought to our attention that the scales are way off and the electronic and they're gonna be quite expensive. What does it cost us every year?
It costs us $500 every year just to get tested and licensed and everything. And I, well, meant to look, because we bought that scale probably close to nine years ago now. And it was expensive then and it's gonna be expensive. The idea of weighing is kind of difficult for everybody. It would be much easier if you probably make our accountants happy, who are continually honest about, you know, checking in each bag. So, you know, I sent around, not Paul, eh?
Palnol. Palnols.
Palnol's rate sheet, which I think is very good for the size bag and you just pay per size bag. And it'd be easy visual reference for Shelley and Greggy to look at and go, "That's $2, that's $3." And it just cleans up the whole thing, keeps it from, you know, this weighing and, well, the scale has stopped working. So, we're looking at thousands of dollars, it changed the, changed the pay structure now. So, if the board wants to move forward, I'll update those numbers. That was just to give you an idea. Just I'll update the numbers for the next thing. We can take a vote, we can announce it and probably move to it June 1st.
Perfect.
We'll put a, make a new sign up. We'll get the people down the street to make us a sign, put it up two weeks before we start charging that amount. And I think actually it'll probably make people happier. It's just easier. It's like, $2, $2, $3.
So, we'll review it, the next meeting we'll, we'll vote and it'll go into effect June 1st?
Yeah, or possibly mid-June, because I want to post the sign. So, everybody sees for two weeks that we're changing out and it's not, you know, like immediate. And then, I think, I think it's just cleaner to do that way. It'll be easier to keep track of. I think our accountants will like it because they're always honest about the weighing and all that stuff. But I think it makes sense, just happenstance, the scale's broken, it's gonna be expensive to replace, it's probably not fixable, so why don't we just move on to something else? Any questions about the pay, the pay scale? I call it a pay scale, but, you know, the rate scale I sent around, pretty straightforward. You know, there are a few things on there, like I said, we don't do, but, and a few of the other fees, we won't charge from what we're charging now. But it's really the per-bag fee is the question, so.
So, is, do you think it just kind of averages out? I mean, you could have a bag that's very heavy and you could have the same-sized bag with newspapers, you know, that isn't, obviously you wouldn't be, you'd recycle that. But, you know, you could have different, it's just the idea, is it?
I think it does and, you know, we have the exact wayers, we have the wave-by wayers, and we have the walk-by wayers. So, I think, I think it will balance out in the long run. And, you know, we're, we're running very good. We've lost customers and it's just an expensive place to run. But I think if we start this way, we'll see how this pans out and we may be facing another round of increase in fees for '25. But for, right now, everything's kind of panned out the way we expected it to when we took it over from Casella. We're just finishing our first full year of running it and it's, it's really not terrible. It's, you know, I make no bones about it, it's a money loser no matter how you look at it, but it's not terrible. It's not that much worse than it was before. And it would take a large rate increase to break even, so I don't see that coming. So, we'll just accept it the way it is. So, I'll update that, because I'll check with, with my guy in Palnol, I'm gonna see him next week anyway, and just see a new rates, rate sheet and, or this one's that I'm gonna have to assume. Get a new rate sheet and bring it, you know, get everything up to date and next meeting we can vote on a new, new rate table and get it going.
Great.
All right?
Okay. Why don't we do the resident letter, which I apparently gave the wrong month on?
Yes. There's going to be something with it to explain what, what alternative, A and B are?
Yes, well, it's gonna be the two pages that just have the alternates that were presented at the meeting. I also got the whole PowerPoint presentation from DeFrain Engineering. Wednesday morning, we're gonna take down the solar thing on the front page, we're gonna put that up on the front page. And the, the letter will have a link so that someone can just copy the link and put it in, go, take you right to the PowerPoint, or they can just go on the webpage and see it. Because the two alternates are nice to look at, but it would really be nice to look at the whole presentation and get an idea of what we're talking about. So, we'll get the letters out the next day or two.
And it will be mailed to everybody on Hawks Avenue and Grand View. Yes.
And, you know, it's, should be back for the next meeting. And, you know, given the post office, hopefully it'll be back. That's why I said, you know, you can drop it off here, scan it, email it to me or whatever. I'd actually prefer it be scanned and emailed, which is somewhat easier. But it could be left at any mailbox downstairs and I'll check that date. Anything else on it anybody wants to check? I'm trying to just make it as simple and straightforward as...
It looked good.
As long as it's, something explains what A and B are.
Right, yep.
Yeah, yeah, and that's on, on her diagrams, like I said, which will go out with the letter and also directing. It is better to look at the whole presentation, but that's 17 pages and we can't send that out to everyone.
Right, that would be...
Just change that May to April and I think you're all set.
Yeah.
Okay. Consensus?
Yep. Good.
Can I say that word? I'll bring my copy with me. Do you need this back? I'll send you the other one.
Got the wrong date. Okay.
Next thing is, we have a complaint by our ordinance, a state statute. We had a complaint on a aggressive slash vicious dog. We have had an incident, the animal control officer, we get an investigation on it and the animal control officer would like to call for a vicious dog hearing. By statute, seven days from the incident, the select board has to get an investigative report, which I'm gonna give you in a second. And then we, if the board votes to have the hearing, then we need to notify both the victim and the dog owner.
Owner.
Of the hearing date. The hearing date has to be 10 days from the date they're notified. However, the victims are going on vacation this weekend. We think for a week, but that's gonna be confirmed tomorrow. So, we're looking for the week of the 16th to 15th for a vicious dog hearing. We'll give you an exact date when we know the travel plans here, because the only other thing we could do is, we can't really do it, we'd have to rush it to get it in this week, but that's not giving the dog owner the 10 days to prepare themselves, which is not fair either. So...
Week of the week.
The 15th, it's 15 minutes.
The 15th is the select board meeting, which I believe will also include a water board meeting.
Yep.
So, I was thinking any date after that. So, I asked Kelly, our ACO, to check in with both parties tonight and tomorrow to check for availability of that week and we'll set it up from there. I'll just pass these around. And what, I'm gonna ask, because it's part of a hearing, is that each of you just read the complaint, the statement, and the partially complete report from the ACO, because she's doing it as a timeline, and then just have a vote to have a hearing or not have a hearing.
Tonight.
Tonight, yeah, because it has to be the seven days, which is tonight.
Right now.
Okay, so the pertinent part of the town ordinance is the definition of a vicious dog is a dog which causes reasonable fear or bodily injury by attacking or threatening to attack by pursuit any person or pet lawfully at the place of attack. And this occurred on a public street. The other part, we do have threat of attack in here. The other part for dog bites is pertinent that the person or animal bitten requires medical attention. The gentleman was bit on his foot, he did not require medical attention. The dog did, was treated. We have a picture of a, kind of a large wound on the dog, received stitches and was treated at the animal hospital. So, we had a meeting this afternoon between the ACO, myself, the constable, and Deputy Proff from the Sheriff's Department, and we viewed this. And it's our feeling to support the ACO to move forward with this. So, without going into the details or having a discussion, which is for the hearing, we need a motion from the board to call for a vicious dog hearing. And it's just a vote yes or no. And like, as I said, because we have the victim going away for vacation and a 10-day requirement to notify, give the owners time, we'll have to establish a date in a couple of weeks.
So, a move that we call for a vicious dog hearing.
Okay.
Have a motion by Tony.
Second.
Second. Discussion. A little bit concerned about the dog, one of the dogs hadn't had its rabies shot, but...
That's, that's, the dog did have its rabies shot.
Okay.
The, the expiration date was March 31st.
Okay.
And the dog is, is licensed, was licensed and has renewed the license.
Okay.
As I understand, today. So, but it's not like it was an extended period and it just expired.
All right.
They apparently last a year or two beyond that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure, okay.
But that's also a reason, you know, that's all part and parcel of it.
Of the hearing, I can imagine.
And I will, if the board votes to have the hearing, it's like a 25-page guideline to procedures, because it is somewhat of a quasi judicial procedure. And there's a lot of alternates for the board to decide on everything from training classes for the dog, training classes for the owners, muscling, on and on. So, I'll, I'll make sure you have all that before we have the hearing.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Uh, no.
Yep. I'm ready to take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? So, carry. 5-0-0.
I'll get you the data as soon as I hear back. Like I said, Kelly was going to, the ACO was going to get in contact with both parties and see what we can work out.
Will this be held in public or how is that done?
All meetings are in public. This is a standalone, this is the only topic, this is it. It's all that will take place is this hearing.
Okay. Didn't know if we had to go in executive session or what.
You do not decide at the hearing. You have the hearing, then you have deliberative sessions.
Okay.
That, you know, you can opt to have them in public, it's not required to be. You can have them in private, it doesn't have to be immediate. It's a set of rules, I'll give you, there's a little set of rules to this, but...
So, I know it was.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, I try to look, I don't think there's been a vicious dog hearing in 20 years.
Wow. Wow.
Which, I don't know if that's lack of enforcement or...
Yeah.
Is, will our new dog ordinance, when we put it into effect, will this be a little bit clearer?
It will be.
Okay.
And that's part of the purpose of changing it, is especially on the threat. It expands, you know, the threat. Most people, you know, it gives you, gives the board more options to order corrective behavior for the owner. Or the dog. Sometimes it's mostly the owner.
Yeah.
And, you know, right now, we have kind of a more narrow thing. It would have been somewhat difficult if just the gentleman in this had been bitten because he wasn't injured.
But the fact that the dog...
Yeah, and when we get into all the details, as you just read, there's other parts to this.
More to pull it out.
And in history, so... But that's why we'll have both parties here. They don't have to be, but it'd be, the complaint, it most definitely wants to be here.
Yep.
And we hope the owners of the dog will attend. And I think this is the way we have to start addressing some of these things.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep. Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Glad that happened.
I don't think I have anything else. Was there?
We did the BCRC, that was this gentleman. Yep. Jim.
May I ask about scheduling for the meetings? Because May is a five-week thing and we have Memorial Day. And if North Bennington is doing their Memorial Day parade, I'm assuming, and do we ever...
Realternate.
Yes, but are, do we walk in the, I know we walk in the ship, okay, I just wanted to make sure, but I didn't know if...
We don't usually go as a group, we'll be as...
Yeah, sure, as just folks, okay. I didn't know if we would have a meeting just to sign warrants or something.
We will have a meeting probably, now that I'm looking at it.
Because we've got Memorial Day weekend.
Either...
Because here's our regular schedule, the 15th.
Or probably the 25th would be best.
Okay, to sign the warrants.
Yeah, and it'd just be, unless it was something pressing, we'll add something on. But normally, you know, we just do the warrants, just pay the bills.
Sounds good, I just wanted to...
And that's a Thursday. But we can just set it up on Zoom like we've done before and...
And just, and then somebody can sign it, perfect. And then we'll be back on June 5th for our regularly scheduled, okay. Thank you for that.
Do you have anything else under TPW?
No.
Okay. Any other business? I, our last meeting, we weren't able to attend something at Lake Perrin because we were having our meeting. So, I met with them a few days later just to see what they want. We're a stakeholder because we've given them some money. Or it was voted to pay them money out of the community appropriations, but... So, the highlights of the thing was is that they have decided not to go with herbicides. Enough of, enough of a pushback. So, what they've done is they've, they're considering buying a harvesting boat that will cut off the weeds five feet below the surface.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Yeah, really.
Pull it up, they have to then take them to an area to be composted.
I was going to say, find a market for it.
Yeah, compost it. Anyway, so, that's their, that's their goal.
Wow.
The, the boat, the piece of equipment is about $110,000. They are within $30,000, they've got donations of within $30,000. They're not using our money that the community appropriations approve for them for the purchase of the boat. They're using it for manpower, maintenance, or, you know, just whatever it takes to run the lake itself, okay? That type of thing, so... There is a possibility that they can rent the boat to other, if they can find somebody that will stay with the boat and operate it, they can run it out to different lakes that are interested in that sort of stuff. So, there is a possibility making it, making some money, but, like, anyway, so... And they understand that their community appropriations money will not come to them until December, which is when we give them all out, so... But, we are a stakeholder, so they're going to keep us informed.
Great.
And I kept emphasizing, we got to find out the source, why, why are nutrients coming there and that sort of stuff? So, we got to keep testing and that sort of stuff. It doesn't do them any good just to keep cutting the weeds and not, not doing anything about it, so...
There's this other thing that, I don't know whether it's done in Vermont, but I know it's been done a lot in New York State, which is to introduce sterile grass-eating coy. Which are really like subway cars. And they just chug through it, they live eight to 10 years. They're like 100 bucks apiece. You need, I think it's six per acre.
Is that all?
It's really, it's a great solution. And I raised it to them when I was at a presentation on this problem in another venue. And they just sort of looked vague. And I wonder whether, maybe if we as a town suggested it since we are stakeholders.
Will do. I didn't know about our, I certainly would have. And Dave also mentioned the fact that if, if these things are out there renting, why don't we rent it, why don't they rent it for a couple of weeks? Because they admitted that they don't have enough help to do it all summer long. It's only, it's going to have to be volunteer work for a week or two in the summer, but...
And I know other people on lakes who have those companies that they hire to come around. And they had done, everything except the coy, I'd never heard of that either. They have a big New York state. I've put a black coy to them, that's...
They have to be sterile.
Oh, yes, yeah.
But they're great, they're big. I mean, they come little and then pretty soon.
Terrifying sounding, but...
Yeah, it's interesting.
And do they, do they eat only specials, do they eat all grasses or...
They eat all underwater grasses.
All underwater grasses, fantastic.
Which is why you don't want to have too many.
It could not go from pond to pond. Oh, yeah. I guess that's a little... Because, yeah, they'd start damaging the ecosystem.
Yes.
Yeah.
But they, but if they're done the way it's recommended, they apparently work fine.
Well, it's better than dumping.
Okay, being sterile, and then every few years you just add a few more that may have died off or something.
Or got...
Or caught.
Caught accidentally by a fish in the pond. But they're big, and so, and they tend to go to the bottom. They're not big accidental-on-the-hook fish.
There are tons of coy at the, in the orchard. People have dumped their goldfish and they've turned into huge. Yeah. I'm surprised they're going for the weed, the weed, that doesn't work. They're trying to like champagne.
Well...
I mean, they've spent millions of dollars.
You mean trying to harvest it?
Yeah.
It just grows back.
It grows back. The more you, I mean, the best thing is to just drain it.
And like I... I mentioned that and they said the permits are unbelievable, the state.
I think Joe was very...
The state hates that. You're upsetting everything downstream because you're luring the lake. Yeah, it's...
The wildlife stuff.
Fish have got more rights than we have.
Maybe they deserve it.
And that one is regulated.
Anyway, so that's...
It's not a gun.
But, that's, thank you. I thought that was worth mentioning, okay?
Wow.
Anything else, any other business?
Nope.
Okay. Entertained a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Tony?
Second. I know, I'm like, yes.
Second by Martha? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Thank you everybody for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.